Richardson, Jordan.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Ung. Velazquez.
Presente.
Vernikoff.
Present.
Williams.
I'm here.
Wond.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli. Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We'll now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Bishop Daru Bryant of the Bible Church of Christ Incorporated, located at 1358 Morris Avenue in the Bronx. Welcome.
All rise.
Distinguished councilmen and women, and honored guests, it's a privilege and honor to be here before you today to do this invocation. Let us bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, Our Father who art in heaven, as we get hold of the new year, let us join in unity transcending the turbulence of global conflicts, anchoring our focus on fortifying the bonds within our community. Let us foster an environment of unwavering solidarity, keeping fervent prayers for global peace while dedicating ourselves to contemporary and proactive solutions as we address the challenges that have plagued our municipality. Our Father, consider our city a tapestry of diversity and ambition, faces entrenched issues that demand our collective resolve, from homelessness to the pursuit of affordable housing, from battling domestic abuse to innovative mental and health resources, from education reforms to nurturing safe spaces for our unattended children, from violence and thoughtfulness to assisting our seniors and empower low-income families with healthy food options and opportunities for the creation of new small businesses. These are not merely just hurdles, but rather these are calls to action demanding our united efforts. In these chambers where decisions mold our city's destiny, our gratitude extends to our mayor, borough presidents, and dedicated council members, also to the newly elected officials. Your responsibility to champion truth guided by morality and love is both an honor and sacred duty as you represent your constituents. Let our actions today and in the coming year be guided by unwavering commitment to morality, ethics, and love. Our faith-based organizations, let us set aside differences and stand together ecumenically, laboring with our community, casting aside cultural divides and biases, embarking together on the pursuit of common purpose, as we look forward possessing an unbreakable unity, surpassing the dividing and fostering an atmosphere where progress thrives. O heavenly Father, with humility and with faith, we invoke divine guidance upon this meeting. May decisions be made in decency and in order, echoing the voice of compassion and justice for all. Let unity prevail over division, love over hate, peace over conflict, as we speak these aspirations into existence, invoking blessings in the name of the Holy Son, my Lord and Savior, and the Savior of others, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Councilmember Althea Stevens to spread the invocation on the record.
It is my honor to have Bishop Daru Bryant, a distinguished individual who is Bronx-born and Southern raised, started his journey in ministry in 1998, starting with outreach in nursery homes, nursing homes, hospitals, and prisons. Bishop Bryant, committed to spreading the word of God and providing solace through his anointed ministry, became evident. Over the course of 12 impactful years, he served as pastor of the pastor at the Bible Church of Christ in Kingston, North Carolina. Under his leadership, the congregation actively engaged with the community, offered food programming, utility bills, help pay utility bills, clothing initiatives, health services, and partner in rehabilitation efforts. Bishop Bryant's commitment to education and spiritual growth is commendable. Graduating from the University of Mount Oliver in 2007 with a bachelor's degree of science in theology, he was also awarded an honorary doctorate of divinity from the International Institute of Church Management. In 2021, after serving in Clinton, North Carolina's city council and served as a pastor and a distinguished businessman, Bishop Bryant stepped down to return back to the Bronx to serve as pastor of Bible Church of Christ. His dedication, commitment to serve is unmatched, with bringing the knowledge and best practices from his experience with integrity, ministry, and public service to the heart of District 16 with a flair of Southern hospitality. I'm truly honored to have a partner like Bishop Daru Bryant, who is truly of value and asset to New York City and much more importantly to District 16 and the Bronx. Please join me extending a warm thank you to Bishop Bryant and joining us for our last stated of 2023. I would like to make a motion to spread the invocation on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes from City Councilmember Justin Brannon.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of December 6, 2023 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
Excuse me, M's 182 and 183, budget modifications.
Finance.
M 184, Board of Elections Certification.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by acknowledging the horrifying death of a child from a migrant family in an Upper West Side shelter. My heart goes out to the family and loved ones as they grieve. This tragedy underscores the need for more culturally competent care and mental health resources in facilities and schools serving asylum seekers. Last week's partial building collapse in Councilmember Sanchez's district was frightening for all New Yorkers, especially the dozens of residents who remain displaced. While we are grateful that no one was seriously injured, this should have never happened. It is critical that our city takes proactive measures to keep New Yorkers safe in their buildings. And next, I'd like to take a moment to remember the lives of Omat Cruz, Frederick Whiteside, and Hilarion Joseph, three New Yorkers who died while on the job last month. Our hearts are with their family, their friends, and community as they grieve the loss of their loved ones. Today, the commercial cleaners of 32BJ are taking a strike vote. This council has a history of standing with workers, and we are proud to stand in solidarity with them in their fight for fair wages and better working conditions. Before I continue, I want to briefly discuss how this council has approached public safety in a comprehensive and holistic way. Public safety is ensuring access to secure housing, which has been a priority. Public safety is when we confront the city's mental health crisis with best practices and greater investments in evidence-based solutions. That's what our mental health roadmap focused on, and today, we will pass legislation from its second part. Public safety is when we truly meet the recovery needs of crime victims rather than simply talking about crime victims. We've passed bills to provide services for domestic violence victims. I created a new crime victim and community safety services initiative with $100,000 for each council district, and we established New York State's first trauma recovery centers in our city to help survivors of violence and communities recover and stop cycles of violence. These and so much more are essential to ensuring our communities are safe. But we know the disparate impacts on Black communities, Latino communities, and other communities of color. Police accountability and transparency are also prerequisites to public safety in our city. Increased access to policing data has been at the center of making our city safer for decades. Police transparency is also pivotal to the trust with communities that is necessary to improve safety and help solve crime. Yesterday, the governor signed into law the bill creating a reparations commission acknowledging the legacy of slavery on our city and communities and starting efforts to address it. Similarly, we also must realize the legacy of policing in certain communities and how experiences with policing differ from other communities. The city's use of stop and frisk that disproportionately affected Black and Latino communities and was ruled unconstitutional by a federal court was a recognition of these experiences. As the federal monitor established by this court decision has repeatedly reported, the NYPD continues to under-report stops and unlawful stops where severe disparities among Black and Latino communities persist. We cannot ignore these realities and the work that remains for us to address them. People in our communities are conditioned to be stopped by police at the various levels, including what are considered to be Level 1 stops, where ID can be requested without an individual having done something wrong or even suspected of doing anything wrong. The reality is that these different levels of stops can be experienced without any practical distinction for the person who is stopped. The trauma and conditioning related to these stops have an impact on the relationships and trust communities have with police, particularly when they occur with no transparency. They can be intrusive and disruptive to the daily lives of residents, students, and essential frontline workers like teachers and nurses, and they should not happen in the shadows. We have to realize and respect those experiences, even if they're not our own, and we cannot ignore the impact they have on public safety. It is our job to contend with the legacies of harm in our communities that impact the lives of generations of Black and Latino New Yorkers and repair them. Accountability and transparency are important pathways to advance that goal, and we must foster thoughtful conversations to facilitate progress rather than those that disregard these serious experiences and issues. As the most diverse council in our city's history, it is important that our actions are consistent with what our communities need. That's why we have advanced solutions to address longstanding issues in our city that hinder the health, safety, and well-being of too many communities. We must not trap ourselves into maintaining a status quo that fights change and does not benefit the diverse communities of the city. Progress is the sign of a healthy democracy. It is what New Yorkers deserve and what this council has focused on delivering. December 12th marked 12 years since the mass shooting tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. The loss of 26 people, including 20 children, is still incomprehensible. We owe it to their memory and to the countless other lives cut short by gun violence to work together to end gun violence that devastate our communities. Before we continue, on a happy note, I want to wish a very merry birthday to Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa, whose birthday falls on Christmas Day. We hope that you have a wonderful celebration, Carmen. Finally, I want to wish everyone happy holidays. Whether you just celebrated Hanukkah or you're celebrating Christmas or Kwanzaa, I hope you have a wonderful holiday season spent with your family and loved ones. As this is the last stated meeting of 2023 and this entire session, I want to thank each and every one of you for your hard work, your dedication, and your service on behalf of all New Yorkers. Together, we accomplished so much in our term, creating and enacting legislation that will improve the lives of working families, women, and children across our city. At the end of the day, that's what our work is all about, making life more equitable and just for New Yorkers and creating new opportunities for all. We were able to achieve so much because of this council. Our first majority women and most diverse council to date chose to invest in our communities, especially those that had been historically overlooked. And while there is so much more work ahead for us, I'm so proud of the foundation we all built together, which will help future generations of New Yorkers build upon our success. Thank you all for your hard work. Happy New Year. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items: A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget; An amendment to an existing Article 5 exemption and renewal of a partial 40-year Article 5 exemption for three buildings in Councilmember Abreu's district; A full 40-year Article 11 exemption for the preservation of eight buildings in Councilmember Richardson-Jordan's district and De La Rosa's districts. The buildings collectively contain 195 units. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items: 506 West 135th Street, NAACP; A UDOT approval disposition of city-owned property; and an Article 11 tax exemption to facilitate the renovation and preservation of three city-owned buildings into approximately 63 affordable cooperative homeownership units in Councilmember Abreu's district; West 120 through 126th Street, ANCP Cluster; A UDOT approval disposition of city-owned property and an Article 11 tax exemption to facilitate the renovation and preservation of four city-owned buildings. It will include approximately 48 affordable cooperative homeownership units, along with commercial and community space in Councilmember Richardson-Jordan's district; Linden Gardens; A UDOT approval disposition of city-owned property and an Article 11 tax exemption to facilitate 37 affordable cooperative homeownership units in Councilmember Nurse and Barron's districts; New Penn Article 11; An Article 11 tax exemption request to facilitate the development of 10 new residential buildings with 71 affordable rental units in Councilmember Barron's district. We're also voting on the site selections for a new approximately 696-seat primary school in Councilmember Ung's district and a new approximately 676-seat high school, including District 75's special education seats in Councilmember Brannon's district. And 541 through 545 Bay Street rezoning will facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building that includes approximately 81 housing units, 25 of which will be permanently affordable, as well as ground-floor commercial space and approximately 42 parking spaces in Councilmember Hank's district. The council is modifying the application to remove the MIH workforce option. Today, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 837, sponsored by Councilmember Robert Holden, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S. 4717, A. 3149, to authorize the New York State Department of Veterans Services to provide eligible veterans with financial assistance for purchasing, training, and the upkeep of service dogs and emotional support dogs. Thank you to our staff members David Romero and Anastasia Zemina. Resolution 584, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to enter three interstate licensure compacts to help medical and mental health providers become licensed in multiple participating sites. Thank you to our staff members Kristi Dwyer, Sarah Suker, Anastasia Zemina, and David Romero. Resolution 863 that I am sponsoring would condemn recent attacks on members of the Sikh community in New York City and call for an end to discrimination against Sikh New Yorkers. Thank you to our staff member Regina Paul. Resolution 473, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S. 1099, A. 1963, which would protect youth during custodial police interrogations. Thank you to our staff members Robert Calandra, Joshua Kingsley, and Jeremy Whiteman. Resolution 556B, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Access to Representation Act, which establishes the right to legal counsel in immigration court proceedings. Thank you to staff members Rebecca Barilla, Nicole Kata, and Robert Calandra. And Resolution 241A, also sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Fair and Timely Parole Act, which would ensure that the parole release process is based on rehabilitation and risk to public safety, and Elder Parole Act, which would establish parole consideration for people at least 55 years old who have served 15 consecutive years in prison. Thank you to staff member Natalie Melzer. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 532A, sponsored by Councilmember James Gennaro, would require the Department of Environmental Protection to report on the additional construction and installation needed to establish the city's coastal bodies of water as vessel no discharge zones and to install at least two pump-out facilities per year until all coastal water bodies are designated as no discharge zones. Thank you to staff members Andrew Born, Ricky Chala, and Claire McLaughlin. Introduction 1139A, sponsored by Amanda Farias, would allow advertising on the interior of four hire vehicles. Thank you to staff members Mark Chen, Kevin Kautowski, John Basile, and Connor Mealy. Introduction 1278, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, would co-name 117 thoroughfares and public places based on requests of council members. Thank you to staff members Christopher Satori, Patrick Mulvaughill, and Michael Sherman. Introduction 1048A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, would require the city chief procurement officer to establish a secure electronic document vault to store procurement-related records. Thank you to staff members Alex Polenoff, Alex Yvlon, Florentine Kabour, and Nia Hyatt. Introduction 563A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would add the right to file a private civil action to the Earn Safe and Sick Time Act, which allows most private employees in New York City to earn paid safe and sick time from their employers. Thank you to staff members Rhea Ogasewa and Elizabeth Arts. Next, Introduction 145, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require the Department of Sanitation to assist the Department of Parks and Recreation with the removal of fallen tree debris from streets after severe weather. Thank you to staff members Christopher Satori and Ricky Chala. Introduction 1131A, sponsored by Councilmember Raphael Salamanca, would require the New York City Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to perform six months of outreach to anyone operating a mobile car wash regarding licensing requirements and related penalties. Introduction 1161A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Bray, would prohibit professional and collegiate sports venues from barring ticket holders from bringing in a reusable beverage container that is made of aluminum or stainless steel and holds 24 fluid ounces or less. Thank you to staff members Morgan Barrett and Ricky Chala. Introduction 946A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require each city agency to have a mental health coordinator to assist and perform outreach to city employees about mental health and support services available to them. Thank you to our staff member Sarah Suker. Next, we will be voting on a package of legislation aimed at addressing the mental health needs of veterans. These bills are the second part of the council's mental health roadmap, a comprehensive and ongoing plan to improve mental health outcomes for New Yorkers. Introduction 1241, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would require the Department of Veterans Services to submit to the council and post on its website an annual report summarizing the mental health services offered and provided by city agencies to veterans and the number of veterans who have applied for and received mental health services. Introduction 1237, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, would require any city agency that collects demographic information through form documents from individuals seeking social services in the city to offer a standardized and voluntary survey asking demographic questions related to veteran status. Introduction 1244, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, would require the Department of Veterans Services in coordination with relevant agencies to develop and distribute an informational pamphlet that describes the department's resources and services. Introduction 1239, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the Department of Veterans Services in coordination with the mayor's community affairs unit and the mayor's public engagement unit to conduct outreach and a targeted public education campaign regarding the mental health resources available to veterans in the city. Thank you to our staff members David Romero and Sarah Suter. Introduction 632A, sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, would amend the city's human rights law to prohibit housing discrimination on the basis of criminal history in New York City with limited exceptions for certain crimes that are considered reviewable. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cardero, Jessica Boulay, William Diore. Next, Introduction 1203A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would require the Department of Correction to provide a letter of incarceration to all individuals as they leave the department's custody that they can use to apply for benefits. Thank you to staff members Jeremy Whiteman and Natalie Melzer. Introduction 1153A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Commissioner of Social Services in consultation with the Police Commissioner, the Commissioner of Sanitation, and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation to produce two reports every quarter on how many people experiencing homelessness were removed from public spaces, what housing services they were offered, and whether there were any involuntary removals or arrests. Thank you to our staff member Amenta Kilowan. Introduction 542, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would require the DOE, ACS, and DOC to issue annual reports on educational programming for juvenile delinquents, juvenile offenders, and adolescent offenders, and to post such reports on their respective websites. Required reporting would include statistics on educational programming enrollment, available services, rates of violence for juvenile and adolescent delinquents and offenders, and other related indicators. Introduction 3, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, would regulate the NYPD's response to children in emotional crisis with the Department of Education public schools. Specifically, this bill would establish procedures for NYPD personnel responding to children in emotional crisis and limit the use of mechanical restraints on such children. Thank you to staff members Nadia Jean-François, Schmita Deschmook, Nicholas Canal, Connell, and Sarah Liss. Introduction 1011A, sponsored by Majority Whip Selena Brooks-Powers, would require the city's Human Resources Administration to develop informational materials on all reduced fare transit programs, such as fare fares, and for the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to distribute the materials to people who have been arrested or issued a summons for fare evasion. Introduction 948A, sponsored by Councilmember Farah Lewis, would expand the scope of certain NYPD reporting and ensure most of its existing reports are posted on the NYPD's website, including those on stop question and frisk, officer deployment, overtime spending, and other data. Introduction 944A, sponsored by Councilmember Camila Hanks, would enhance current reporting requirements on civil actions filed against the NYPD to resolve a gap in the data. Introduction 638A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require an annual report on donations that exceed $1 million in value to the New York Police Department. It would also require information on the programs or projects to which the NYPD applied for those donations. Introduction 538A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, which is part of the How Many Stops Act, would require the NYPD to report on instances in which an individual denies an officer's attempt to obtain consent to conduct a search for which no legal justification besides consent exists, and provide information pertaining to the circumstances involved. Introduction 781B, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, would require the NYPD to report on the justification for vehicle stops. Introduction 585A, sponsored by the Public Advocate, would require the NYPD to turn over body-worn camera footage to the Department of Investigations Inspector General for the NYPD within 10 days of receiving a request unless disclosure is prohibited by law. Introduction 586A, sponsored by the Public Advocate and Councilmember Alexa Aviles, and part of the How Many Stops Act, would require the NYPD to publicly report data on police investigative stops of civilians that are categorized as Level 1 and 2 stops. Currently, the NYPD is only required to record Level 3, or Reasonable Suspicion Stops, but according to the federal court monitor, there's been an inconsistency that has contributed to severe under-reporting and data gaps. Level 1 stops allow officers to engage in investigative questioning with an objective credible reason that is not necessarily indicative of criminality. New Yorkers and communities can experience this as being asked for identification or where they may be going by an officer. This is not when officers have casual conversations or interactions with civilians or community members about their families, their communities, or about their weekends. It is not when an officer gives directions to a tourist, asks a local bodega owner about the Knicks game, or helps someone to get across the street. The NYPD's own training guide makes it clear that these community engagement interactions do not classify as, do not classify as level one. We even went further to add language to the bill that explicitly exempts them as well. Level two stops allow officers to ask more pointed questions based on a founded suspicion that criminality is afoot, permitting them to ask consent for a search that a civilian can decline and walk away from. The federal court monitor and the stop and frisk case and the NYPD, NYPD's own audits have repeatedly shown that level three stops are being underreported and officer confusion about the levels contribute to this. These audits and reports have also shown continued unlawful stops occurring, particularly in certain communities. Regardless of the level, New Yorkers who are stopped often can't distinguish between levels and the experience for them can be the same. This legislation would improve transparency and create a uniform standard of reporting on investigative stops. At a time when every officer is issued a smartphone and NYPD maintains advanced technology, this kind of reporting can be completed without added burden. Level three stop reporting is already happening on smartphones and the use of the term paperwork is inaccurate. NYPD indeed offered language changes to this bill to align it with current reporting, and we accepted all of those changes. Again, I want to reiterate how important transparency is to improving public safety and community trust. Unfortunately, there has been significant miscommunication about this bill circulated in meetings and media that has created such an inaccurate conversation with people opposing things that aren't even in the legislation. We believe and are confident that there is an opportunity in a collaborative implementation progress with the administration and other stakeholders to alleviate the greatest concerns being voiced. Access to this data can help our city and communities become safer, and I just want to be clear, this is not about individual officer behavior. It's about having the broader data on policing that helps inform public safety policy. We thank our staff members Robert Calandra, Joshua Kingsley, and Jeremy White Men. And finally, introduction 549A sponsored by public advocate Williams would ban solitary confinement in city jails. All people in city custody would have at least 14 hours of out of cell time in shared spaces. The new disciplinary process established by this bill would allow temporary separation from the general public, from the general population in instances where an individual engages in an act of violence in custody. Thank you to staff members Jeremy White Men and Natalie Meltzer. Thank you all for your attention. I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into the discussion of general orders. We are going to begin with public advocate Jomani Williams.
Thank you so much. Peace and blessings, love and light to everyone. First of all, this room looks very familiar, so it's good to be here with everyone. This is a pretty momentous day as we're passing a lot of pieces of legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your leadership on so many of these. I first just wanted to talk briefly about solitary, which is also getting some misinformation. I just want to make it clear that this is about safety at Rikers. This allows for the separation and even a short term isolation from people who are dangerous themselves or others. What it does prevent is the isolation that is known for torture, known as torture for hours at a time that causes physical toll that is lifelong and makes someone likely to be rearrested, commit suicide, or die by an overdose two weeks after they are released. Also, I want to make sure I'm lifting up some of the things that the correction offices are bringing up, which is the amount of violence that occurs to them and particularly sexual assault when it comes to women's corrections offices. That's happening right now while they're using isolation and solitary, which means that it is not working. And if we want to do something, try something different, we have to actually, if we want something different, we have to actually try something different. And so this is a, a response to that to try to have a safer jail. Lastly, I want to speak to, although I'm running out of time, 586, which has a lot of miscommunication. And my hope is that during the six month implementation period, hopefully this council passes, is that the administration will come to the table in earnest to really talk about how we can implement this to get the data we all say that we need, like the remedial process asked to do, asked us to do when we passed the Community Safety Act and we talked about the abuses of stop, question, and frisk. As the speaker said, this does not add an administrative burden, and I'm very thankful this council will hopefully be passing, not the bill the mayor's talking about, because I don't know what bill that is, but a bill that actually helps us have better policing and safer streets. If I can, just thank my staff very quickly and the co-sponsors, Councilmember Caban Rivera, Councilmember Hudson Aviles, and of course, the Speaker for their leadership. I want to thank all of my staff, starting with early on, Nick Smith. I want to thank Director of Legislation, Salma Sfado, Deputy Public Advocate for Housing and Health, Jeffrey Sevier, Deputy Public Advocate for Justice and Safety, Grant Safran, Senior Legislative Policy Associate. Someone may be familiar to this council, Elizabeth Guzman, my general counsel, who stepped in to really help push this forward. And a special shout out to two people in particular who really in the past few months have worked day in and day out to make sure that this crossed the finish line. So a special shout out to Veronica Avies, Chief Deputy Public Advocate for Policy, and Rosie Mendez, Director of Legislation and Policy. Thank you so much, also to council staff.
Thank you. We're now going to call on Councilmember Shulman, followed by Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today we are voting on a street co-naming for Sheikh Hamud Sayidi. Mr. Sayidi was an 86-year-old Muslim man who was ambushed and shot from behind on his way to mosque services in July of this year in his neighborhood of Richmond Hill. He was an 86-year-old, I'm sorry. Mr. Sayidi immigrated from Yemen in the late 1960s. He was a father and great-grandfather who settled in New York City in the late 1970s and opened his first grocery business in Manhattan and worked double shifts to provide for his entire family, including his brother's families and the families in his village back in Yemen. Mr. Sayidi was a person full of energy who loved to walk daily for miles. His walks included stops to visit friends and where random people would stop him, giving him handshakes and greetings around the neighborhood of Richmond Hill and Q Gardens. His daily walks concluded at the mosque where he read the Quran and prayed, and prayed. Today with the street co-naming, Mr. Sayidi's legacy in the community will always be remembered. Thank you.
We're now calling on Councilmember Dinowitz, followed by Councilmember Riley.
Today, the city council's voting introduction 1237A, which is part, which is part of stop two of the mental health roadmap, and I am proud to be part of this. And I am proud to be part of this, and I am proud to be part of this, and I am proud to be part of this. Have access to the mental health resources that they may need. 1237A requires our city agencies receiving application forms for social services to include a voluntary survey of veteran status in the demographic collection. This legislation was crafted with the consultation of city veterans and the Department of Veteran Services with the goal of ensuring that our city's veterans have access to the resources and services most specific to their needs and to gain a better understanding of the scope of hardship facing New York's large veteran community. While we have knowledge of the many obstacles that veterans face throughout the boroughs, we do not know the exact number or locations of, of our veterans. This bill addresses this issue without impeding on privacy of veterans who would not choose to self-identify. This bill is a meaningful step toward addressing the mental health needs of our city's veterans. I'd like to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership and Councilmember Linda Lee in developing the Mental Health Roadmap, a crucial initiative for our city's overall well-being. I would like to thank my staff, Jenna Klaus and Adam Starapoli, and of course, my many colleagues that have already signed on to this bill and have supported its advancement. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to hear from Councilmember Riley, followed by Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am proud to be voting on my bill today, Intro 1203-A. This piece of legislation will undertake transparency and accessibility concerns faced by formerly incarcerated people looking to access public service vital to rebuilding their livelihoods. Individuals leaving custody at the Department of Corrections should be receiving holistic services in their community to help them advance and thrive, as well as avoid future criminal justice contact. Unfortunately, this is not always the case due to the lack of connection to prove their discharge from the DOC custody. This is where letters of incarceration prove to be indispensable. This highlights the need to reform the New York City criminal justice system, and it begins with increasing oversight measures to ensure access and fairness exist in and outside the DOC facilities. With the demand to improve process and advance post-detention resources like housing, mental health, support, and healthcare, Intro 1203A is crucial to ensure that we are staying on course to sustainable, to be sustainable to close Rikers Island without delay through supporting re-entry navigation and reducing recidivism. I encourage and continue to encourage the support for Intro 1203A, legislation that works to reform our criminal justice system and support equity for all. Thank you, Speaker Adams, and my colleagues for joining me in passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Lewis, who I believe is remote, followed by Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, our body will be voting on a bill I am proud of, Intro 948A, a bill that requires the NYPD to report information and data regarding their operations. This bill will expand the scope and frequency of the current reporting required by the NYPD to include information about their use of stop, question, and frisk, deployment of officers, use of overtime spending, crime status information, as well as data on criminal complaints, arrests, and summonses issued, all to be posted publicly on NYPD's websites. To keep New Yorkers safe, there must be a level of trust that the NYPD is doing everything they can to enforce the law without discrimination and utilizing the proper protocols and resources. Overall, this bill aids in bolstering and repairing the public's confidence by promoting accountability and supporting evidence-based decision-making. With greater insights into problematic operation, it compels the agency to improve their training, best practices, and performance measures to better serve the needs of New Yorkers. Our collective objective as a body is to improve public safety, and this bill supports those efforts. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for her leadership, Senior Legislative Counsel Josh Kingsley, and my staffers Blake Shaw and Daniel Haridia for their work and support on this bill, and I want to encourage my colleagues to vote for Intro 948. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember De La Rosa, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you so much. I am proud to sit with this body that has worked tirelessly to pass bills to reform our criminal justice system from reporting civilian interactions with the NYPD to the treatment of incarcerated individuals in our correction facility. I want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership, public advocate Williams for his leadership, and all my colleagues who are getting these bills passed today. I also want to take the opportunity to recognize a street co-naming that we are passing in honor of Dominic Alexander in my district, a young black man who was found deceased in a local park in my district at the height of the most recent wave of Black Lives Matters protests across our nation. Dominic had a bright future and a bright light ahead of him and was a beloved member of our community. His name will soon be enshrined in our uptown streets, giving space for our community to mourn his irreparable loss and an inspiration for positive social change. The location of his death has become a place where our community has come together to organize and mobilize against the racial profiling of black New Yorkers across our city. My thoughts and my prayers are with the Alexander family and all of Dominic's friends who will now be able to celebrate his legacy uptown. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Brayu. We'll hear from Councilmember Brayu.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to thank Speaker Adams for supporting our bill, Intro 1161, which is passing today. It's about time that we can bring reusable water bottles to our sport venues to making sure that folks can hydrate, enjoy themselves, and also take on the war against plastic. We know it's better for our environment, and it's better for our fans, and so, Go Planet! I want to thank everybody who has supported this bill. A special shout out to Eric Goldstein from Natural Resources Defense Council, who brought this bill to our attention, and want to thank the Speaker Sanitation Nurse, Sanitation Chair Sandy Nurse as well, for her strong support and all of our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I'm calling about 563. I am pleased that the city council is voting to add a private right of action to the Earn Safe and Sick Time Act. Two-thirds of the paid sick time laws across the country have a private right of action, including New York State. Today's vote coincides with the 10th anniversary of the passage of the city's Earn Sick Time Law, which I introduced and fought for alongside many, many people some 10 years ago. And at that time, we gave 3.4 million private sector workers across New York the opportunity to participate in paid sick days. It's a crucial time for a private right of action. When workers lose their jobs because they took protected sick time, equitable relief is much more readily available in court. Workers who experience violations of this law often have additional claims like wage and hour violations. Best to meet them in a court action. And third, a paid sick class action involving many workers facing similar violations is only an option in court. I want to thank Shuler Warren Pooter, Chief of Staff in my office, amazing amount of work on this bill, Sam Goldstein, Jeff Baker, Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, Ria Ogasawa, Jeremy John, Fajr Ali, and CSS Carmen De La Rosa, and organizations like the Partnership, the Hospitality Alliance, and A Better Balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Aviles, followed by Councilmember Hudson.
Good afternoon, colleagues. I just want to talk a little bit about Intro 586 that is being proposed here today. As we know, this legislation quite simply increases transparency from a public agency, the NYPD. This bill will require some reporting on investigative stops, including what is classified as a level one encounter. To be clear, as was said earlier, but continues to be a mythology perpetuated by several. This does not include casual conversations, interactions between police officers and citizens giving directions or talking to neighbors. Level one encounters, according to the NYPD guide of which this legislation follows, must have a credible objective reason. For many, level ones can range from repeated unlawful harassment to what we have seen historically escalating to physical abuse, violence, and in worst cases, death. Sammy Feliz, who worked tirelessly in coalition to bring about this legislation before you, knows this all too well. Sammy's brother, Alan Feliz, was killed by the NYPD in 2019 during a so-called low-level encounter. We need this data. We need the data to understand the scale and the scope and to do better by our residents and to stop the disparities that are impacting so many communities. If we know we are perpetrating harm as a city, we have a responsibility to at least find the data and do what we can to ensure that the health and safety of all New Yorkers is protected. This is a good government bill. Thank you, and I hope my colleagues will continue to support it.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Hudson, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It's a special day for the New York City Council. We're taking the necessary steps to truly redefine public safety, and we're doing something many thought impossible. We're heating the demands of the hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who took to the streets in the summer of 2020 demanding elected officials hold police officers accountable and put an end to our centuries-long overreliance on carceral and punitive solutions to questions of public safety. Today, we're passing the How Many Stops Act, and we're banning the use of solitary confinement in city jails. Today, we're tangibly demonstrating our Today, we're tangibly demonstrating our dedication to end cycles of violence and punishment that have long been a stain on this great city. As a prime sponsor of one of the two bills in the How Many Stops Act, I'll keep my remarks to my bill, Intro 538. Introduced last session by now Borough President Antonio Reynoso, Intro 538 will require officers to report on any declined requests for searches and enhance existing policies by requiring reporting on whether officers use consent searches to collect DNA and to understand whether officers use interpretation services when seeking consent from people with limited English proficiency. I'd like to thank the Justice Committee, New York Civil Liberties Union, and Communities United for Police Reform for their tireless work this session and in previous sessions to get these bills passed. I'd especially like to thank the families of Antonio Williams, Alan Feliz, and all others who've experienced police violence. We're well aware of the mayor's threat to veto the How Many Stops Act, and this council, under the leadership of Speaker Adams, didn't flinch at the mayor's bullying the first time, and it certainly won't the second time nor the third. Our votes are locked, and the administration would certainly find a better use of its time elsewhere. I'd also like to quickly highlight one of my other bills that is passing today, Intro 946, which will establish the role of a mental health coordinator at city agencies. This bill is the brainchild of a constituent, Ms. Beverly Johnson, who has been championing this bill for more than five years. As a city employee, she faced difficulties obtaining mental health support and understood that having a single-point person at each agency whose civil servants can turn to for information would have helped her and many others. She's with us today in the gallery, and I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your tireless advocacy in support of mental health resources. Thank you to my colleagues and happy holidays.
Thank you. We'll now call on Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Stevens.
My colleagues, you know, this is incredible. We're just telling police officers to report something, to report something. And oftentimes, these are very brutal police officers that disrespect our rights to move about freely in our neighborhoods, and we're asking you to report something. There's going to come a time where we have bills where you have to go to jail for disrespecting us, where you have to go to jail when you abuse the use of deadly force. Oftentimes, when they abuse the use of deadly force, they say they need cultural sensitivity training. Well, I agree with that, but you could do that after you do 20 years to life in prison for killing the person. We'll get you a Black history book to read in jail. We should be very, very vigilant in holding the police department accountable. These bills are about reporting, and that's the very least we could do. And resistance to that tells me that this mayor and this police department wants to continue their disrespectful, brutal behavior toward our communities. And today, we'll be passing a street naming for a shero in our community, Ms. Carolyn Faulkner. Ms. Carolyn Faulkner is the wife of Mr. Melvin Faulkner, who made his transition. Together, they worked hard for our youth in our community. Together, they worked on getting over 100 families out of foreclosure in our community. So we'll be honored to say that Ms. Carolyn Faulkner's name will go up with her husband's name, who's already in our community. And every time they see that name, we can tell the story about the great work of the Faulkners and our beloved East New York.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you to our speaker and her consistent advocacy for fostering trust and cultivating transparency between city agencies and members of our community. I would like to also acknowledge Borough President Vanessa Gibson, who introduced Intro 638 during her tenure. By passing this critical law is a step in the right direction in creating transparency within the police department as we mandate and annual report on donations exceeding $1 million. We are empowering the public with the knowledge they deserve and the council with the data needed for efficient oversight. The transparency is only not held with NYPD accountability, but also allows us a stride of public interest to assist the impact of such donations on our youth and our broader community. I firmly believe that the understanding with these funds and direction to promulgate ensuring that programs and initiatives that are positively influencing the lives of our community, this legislation significantly is a commitment to our open dialogue, promoting civic engagement, strengthening the vital bonds between law enforcement and communities that we need. And I also would like to acknowledge and show my appreciation for all my colleagues who are passing important and powerful legislation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for general orders? No one else? Okay. We will now move in... Does anybody else want to speak? Okay. Okay, thank you. We will now move to the report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Intro 632-A Housing Discrimination.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, Intro 563-A Safe and Sick Time Act.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Contracts, Intro 1048-A Electronic Document Vault.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 549-A Solitary Confinement.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1203-A Letters of Incarceration.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro 3A Students in Emotional Crises in Public Schools.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 542-A Educational Programming for Adolescent and Other Juvenile Offenders.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency and Waterfronts, Intro 532-A Waste Pumpout Facilities.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered REZO 864 Transparency Resolution.
coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU 298 and REZOS 869 and 870, and preconsidered LU 299 and REZO 871 Tax Exemptions.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 1153-A Reports on Removals.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 281 and REZO 872, and LU 282 and REZO 873 Various UDAPs.
coupled on general orders.
LU 283 and REZO 874, and LU 292 and REZO 875 Tax Exemptions.
coupled on general orders.
LU 293 and REZO 876 UDAT Manhattan.
coupled on general orders.
LU 294 and REZO 877, and LU 295 and REZO 878 New School Facilities.
coupled on general orders.
LU 296 and 297, 541-545 Bay Street.
approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 1970 of the New York City Charter.
Report of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Intro 946-A Mental Health Coordinator.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Preconsidered Intro 1278, Naming of 117 Thoroughfares and Public Places.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Intros 538-A through Intro 1011-A on the next page, NYPD Reporting Bills.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro 145-A Removal of Vegetation in Public Spaces.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1131-A Unlicensed Mobile Car Wash Operators.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1161-A Reusable Beverage Containers.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 1139-A For Higher Vehicle Advertising.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Veterans, Intro 1237-A Veteran Demographic Data.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros 1239-A and 1241-A Veteran Mental Health Services.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros 1244-A Online Resource Tool for Veterans.
amended and coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU 296 and REZO 879, and LU 297 and REZO 880, 541-545 Bay Street.
coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons Commissioner of Deeds.
coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Borelli.
I vote aye on all, except 538, 549, 563, 586, 632, 781, 944, 948, 131, I'm sorry, 111, 161, and 153-A.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Okay, so I'm going to want the transparency resolution, Intros 538-A, 549-A, 563-A, 586-A, 632-A, 781-B, 944-A, 948-A, 1011-A, 1161-A, 1153-A, and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
I vote no on LU 296 and accompanying REZO 280, 279. No on LU 297 and accompanying REZO 80, because it's 30% affordability and 70% market, and I vote aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Butcher.
No on 586, aye on all the rest, and congrats to all my colleagues on the legislation today.
Thank you. Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
I vote aye on all. I do want to mention on one of the co-signings, a woman named Katie Ferguson. She's going up on West 95th Street. She is very well-known to the Presbyterian Church on the corner. She was born into slavery in 1779, came to New York, was very, very active in the church, and honored by W.E.B. Du Bois many times. And we look forward to seeing her up on the co-signing on 95th Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brooks Powers.
I vote aye on all and congratulate all passing bills today.
Thank you. Caban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. New York City will never torture our way to public safety. Far from achieving public safety, solitary confinement only leads to more violence. Everyone involved, from incarcerated New Yorkers to correctional officers to medical staff to communities on the outside, will get better public safety outcomes when we finally ban solitary. The purpose of this bill is to protect detainees from the horrors and ills of solitary confinement. Nothing in this bill should be read to exclude the possibility of other enforcement mechanisms available to people who are harmed by solitary confinement to seek redress for the violation of their rights. And I just want to end by saying much love and respect to all the directly impacted New Yorkers, organizers, and advocates who have been working hard for years and years to finally bring us to this point. Thank you, Madam Speaker, Chair Rivera, Public Advocate Williams, and others for your leadership. I look forward to continuing to work with you all to fight for the enactment and proper implementation of this vital law, no matter what obstacles this mayor throws in our way. So I am aye on all, with the exception of 1131-A, on which I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Carr.
I'd like to disclose on the record that in the transparency resolution we're voting on today, CUNY is funded, and my husband is a student at CUNY. And I'll be voting no on pre-considered Resolution 864, as well as introductions 538-A, 549-A, 563-A, 586-A, 632-A, 781-B, 944-A, 948-A, 1011-A, 1161-A, 1153-A, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
I vote aye on all.
Dinowitz.
I vote aye.
Farias.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Just quickly, just wanted to shout out Intro 1139-A. Today's a big day for our rideshare drivers. I'm proud to pass Intro 1139-A and find a resolution for a longstanding and awaited opportunity for drivers everywhere and to finally fulfill what has been a long missed opportunity for our local economy. Really wanted to shout out my colleagues who have signed on to this important legislation, and thank you to all the advocates and folks who worked with me on this at IDG, AFL-CIO, Lyft, Uber for higher vehicle drivers for their continued support on the bill and the rideshare workforce. And lastly, I just want to shout out to our IDG Uber Lyft drivers that are here with us today to watch this vote happen. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Feliz.
I'd like to disclose on the record that I'm an adjunct professor at CUNY Holstos Community College in the Bronx, and I vote aye on all.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all. I'm proud to vote yes on Intro 1153, which I introduced alongside Councilmember Nurse. Encampment sweeps are an inhumane and ineffective strategy in addressing street homelessness, especially as the mayor exacerbates street homelessness by evicting asylum seekers from shelter through his 30- and 60-day rules. The council must have an understanding of how sweeps are being used. I also want to uplift the Progressive Caucus for passing three of our core legislative priorities today, including ending solitary confinement in our city jails, the How Many Stops Act, and the Fair Chance for Housing Act. I'm grateful to the Speaker and all of the bill's sponsors, including the public advocate and councilmembers Rivera, Hudson, Aviles, Caban, and Powers for advancing transformational legislation. Today's a big day in New York City. This body is taking a bold stand for progressive values, and I'm excited to continue this wave of momentum into the new term. I'm also proud to be voting yes on a co-naming in my district for firefighter and first responder Albert Filosa, who died of cancer caused by his work on the 9/11 cleanup. May his legacy always be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanks.
Thank you. Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. I am proud that this body will be voting on Intro 944-A. And we cannot solve problems unless we understand it. And Intro 944-A, this bill allows New Yorkers to understand just how many of these misconduct cases are being settled, dismissed, or adjudicated for whatever reasons. We have all types of info on the five-year lookback of claims, decisions, and consequences. However, we virtually have no information on settlements. And information is power, and this bill will empower the public to ensure justice in our law enforcement. I want to thank the Speaker, my colleagues, public safety staff, Josh Kingsley, and my D49 staff for helping move this bill forward and this important piece of legislation. Congratulations on all my colleagues passing bills today, and happy holidays. And hopefully, I don't die. I feel better. Bye. And I vote aye on everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks. Feel better.
Thank you.
Holden.
Permission to explain?
Go ahead.
I'm concerned about Intro 586, and let me give you the reasons. At an off-topic press conference yesterday by the mayor, Deputy Mayor Fabian Levy reported approximately 8.5 million 911 calls annually, the NYPD's testimony on level-one police encounters yearly. That's some reporting that has to be done. Former Police Commissioner Bill Breton suggests actual police interactions might be double the reported number due to many not requiring body cameras. So excessive reporting with the current police force that we have, which is really down to historic lows, will hinder police efficiency, keeping officers behind desks instead of on patrol. Again, I listened to the scanner in my district, in my precincts, and I have each unit, each unit 911, that's one car, holding five 911 jobs. Now you're asking them to report on every single encounter. I think a compromise here could have been level one is exempt, and you report on level two and three. So I think this is an overreach. I'm concerned that it'll hurt public safety, not help public safety. So the public advocate mentioned about just checking boxes. Again, this is the report on level three. There's about 50 questions on here. So we have to make sure that this will work. The police department testified in March, it won't work. It can't work. Yet, we're taking that chance. So this is why, you know, I'm concerned. I'm really for public safety, and I want us to, when we call 911, the cops are going to arrive. I want to be sure of that. This bill is not going to do it. So with that, I vote aye on all, except Intros 538-A, 549-A, 563-A, 586-A, 632-A, 781-B, 944-A, 948-A, 1011-A, 1161-A, 1153-A, 632A, 781B, 944A, 948A, 1011A, and 1161A, of which I vote no. Got that?
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan. Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Today, we are ending solitary confinement in New York City. Solitary confinement is torture, period. And I'm proud that the City Council is voting to end it in this city with the leadership of Speaker Adams, Public Advocate Williams, Councilmember Rivera, and also former Councilmember Danny Drum, my predecessor, who was here before and who has been championing this issue for so long. There are two street namings in my district I'd also like to call attention to. I'm proud of voting today to co-name 34th Avenue Open Street as Paseo Park, a beloved 26-block open street in Jackson Heights, the gold standard for the city, beloved in our community because it has provided safe passage to thousands of schoolchildren every morning and afternoon, and it's provided vital open green space in a community that has some of the least amount of it in this city. Renaming it Paseo Park reflects how cherished this open street is for our neighborhood of Jackson Heights. Another street naming we are voting for today is for Lawrence Murphy, who advocated for more green space in Jackson Heights. Lawrence played a crucial role in establishing the Jackson Heights Green Alliance, which focused on creating and maintaining public open spaces and green areas. Some of his efforts resulted in Traverse Park, our only park in Jackson Heights, being expanded, the Growa Park Campaign successfully turning private school land into public parkland, and paving the way and helping to lead the effort to create Paseo Park, 34th Avenue Open Street. His work, his legacy is now carried forward by my good friend and constituent Nadine Keela Murphy, whose advocacy for public space and green space in our community continues. Thank you, and I vote aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all with the exception of 632A, for which I'm a no, and 586, for which I abstain.
Thank you. Lewis.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
Aye on all, and I abstain on 586.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote? One second. First, I want to say congratulations to all my colleagues here. Thank you for everything you have done, and thank you for the leadership. And thank you for all the team, legislative team, that have been on point on things. So I am happy, always ready to party with you. The time that I'm not partying is because I'm sick in my heart. So in all, I say aye on all and abstain for 586.
Thank you. Nurse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you to all my colleagues who are supporting Intro 1153 today. It's just a reporting bill that will require regular reporting on homeless removals and finally shine a light on how these removals are initiated, where and how often they occur, which agencies are involved, how much they cost, how many involuntary hospitalizations occurred through the removal, and if people are actually being offered services. We're hoping this data will show the full scope and breadth of how our city chooses to hide and criminalize homelessness rather than solve it. Intro 1153 will help us finally understand how our resources are being spent in not addressing housing, but instead spent on putting more boots on the ground with the police rather than on these agencies. I want to thank Ryan Hickey from my team for over a year of working on this. Thank you to the Legal Aid Society, to Vocal New York, Mobilization for Justice, the Safety Net Project, and the Coalition for the Homeless. I want to thank my co-prime Councilmember Shaana Hanif for her partnership on this bill. Thank you, Speaker Adams, for seeing this bill through. I also want to congratulate the Halt Solitary Coalition, Communities United for Police Reform, Make the Road, which is Bushwick Homegrown, and the families who have been fighting for many of the bills that we are voting on for years and many other groups. Congratulations, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
It's very disturbing to me today that we are once again watching the progressives raise their hands up in greatness, that what they've accomplished here today is something that should be applauded. Instead, what we are doing is dismantling our police. Make no mistake. The numbers that my colleague and Council Holden has mentioned are real-time numbers. We are presently waiting between four and six hours for an officer to reply to a 911 call in my district. As far as solitary confinement goes, wake up, there's no such thing as solitary confinement. The hole has been covered up now and filled in for 10 years or more. Has anybody in this council know anybody who actually served in solitary confinement on Rikers Island? Because I do. I do too. Okay, good. Okay, very good. Either way, look, don't interrupt me. I'm entitled to my time. That's enough.
Keep going.
That is enough. I let you shut me down once. You will not shut me down again. You sit here and you claim women's rights. How about the rights of our female correction officers that are brutally beaten and raped? How about them? Or they don't matter because they wear a uniform? Give me a break. I will go forward now, and I will vote no on 538A, 549A, Aye on all the rest.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
I guess so, yes.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am extremely disappointed by the hysterics and the misinformation that is being spread, not just by the mayor, but by my colleagues here today. We're talking about a reporting bill, a reporting bill, a few questions on an iPhone. I am deeply proud, deeply proud, to be a part of this body today that is passing transformative criminal justice legislation. And I especially want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams for her bold and clear leadership. We are passing three major priorities of the Progressive Caucus. We are ending torture in New York City once and for all. It was reported that people who failed to pay child support were spending 23 hours a day in jail last month. This torture is happening in our city right now, and thanks to the legislation of Public Advocate Williams, it will end. We are ending discrimination against formerly incarcerated people who are just searching for housing, housing. And we are bringing real transparency and accountability to the NYPD. This simple and quick reporting process will make a real difference for us to understand where and how overpolicing is happening in our city today. I'm honored to vote aye on all, and I again really want to thank the Speaker for her leadership in making this compelling and transformative package of legislation get passed into law.
Thank you. Richardson, excuse me, Richardson-Jordan.
Aye on all.
Riley.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just want to commend all my colleagues who are passing amazing bills today. I just want to state for record, I personally know a couple of people who have been in solitary confinement. It has really, really affected their lives, including my father. So with that being said, I'm proud to stand with my colleagues today to vote aye on all, and let's continue to work for everyday New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Rivera.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I will, is it after, it could be evening at this point, but I will proudly be voting aye on all. I want to speak specifically at Intro 549, which I'm co-sponsoring along with many others, and thank the public advocate. I'm so proud and deeply grateful to have worked in coalition with advocates to get us to this moment, many of whom have joined us in this room right now. Securing this support and momentum has been years in the making and is almost entirely thanks to the advocates who led the way and helped develop the legislation that we are voting on today, to the Speaker who stood by us on this issue and supported a hearing that for seven hours heard from all sides, took every concern into account. I thank her, and I want to thank Danny Drum, who carried this bill during his time as an elected official fearlessly. Research shows that solitary confinement exacerbates mental illness and destabilizes people in a way that increases the likelihood of violence, which undoubtedly runs counter to all of our public safety goals. We must strive for a criminal legal system that leads the nation in reform, that leads the nation in reforms rather than accept a status quo where our neighbors are locked away in violent and dangerous conditions. We must continue working in coalition to gain support for and investments in a holistic and effective approach to public safety that includes community-based services, that includes alternatives to incarceration. And it is because we remain grateful to all of those who have worked on this, on this bill, but also those who work on the island. That is why we push to get this done today, to remove something horrific and something dangerous. I want to congratulate all my colleagues on this bill, on these bills today, especially those that are criminal justice-minded in terms of their reform. And I want to thank all of the staff in this room and throughout 250 and City Hall that makes moments like today possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the context of the last week in my council district, which saw a building collapse, leaving nearly 50 families homeless during the holidays, many of which are watching this dated at my office right now, receiving services, an e-bike fire that took two businesses and displaced another handful of families in Kingsbridge, five-year-old twins that died, and they were found dead in their home in Mount Hope at the boundary of Councilmember Felice's district and my new district, multiple shootings across the community, a fall that had us lose a one-year-old child, Nicolás Antonio Feliz Dominici, which in this dated, we are renaming a street for, occurrences that have been happening since I took office in January of 2022, but also well before I was born into District 14, right on 183rd and University, 35 years ago. We experience concentrated disinvestment. We experience stop and frisk every single day. We experience solitary confinement. And yet, we are diamonds in the rough. We find ways to push forward. We graduate Ivy League institutions. We start businesses. We lead corporations. We deserve dignity and respect. Our community will be safer when we see true investment in quality homes, in well-resourced schools, in after schools, in proper health care, in the social safety net. Public safety in my neighborhood is stability, and law enforcement and criminal justice must be accountable. I proudly vote aye on all today.
Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
The first tenet of government is to make people feel safe, and improving community policing was one of my platforms when I ran for City Council in 2021. At the time, there was a lack of responsiveness to neighborhood concerns, particularly with regard to the Jewish and AAPI communities in the district. In my first year in office, with help from the administration, I was able to positively transform how my local precincts interacted with the public and address public safety issues. I had major concerns with Intro 586A when it was first introduced and brought those concerns to the Speaker's office. As a result, some modifications were made to specify that day-to-day interaction with the police is not affected and public safety is not compromised. The bill will not take effect until later next year. And during that time, it is important to make sure that all local precincts and district attorneys are involved in the implementation of this legislation. While I understand that implementation is not the role of the council, oversight is, and I will be monitoring the process to ensure that the important transparency that is being sought occurs while New Yorkers continue to be kept safe. With that, I vote aye on all.
Stevens.
I proudly vote aye on all, and this vote is for all the young people who often don't feel like people who govern and don't see or hear them. We hear you. We see you, and we're here to govern for you as well. Thank you.
Ong. Velazquez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I'd like to disclose on the record, my brother sits on the board of Samaritans of New York, and my husband works for DEPS Deputy Commissioner. And I would like to abstain from 632A, 549A, 538A, 585A, 781A. I'd like to vote no on 586A. All others, aye. I'll give you the list, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Vernakov.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. What's taking place in these chambers today is not momentous. It is an affront to New Yorkers, and it will do nothing but further promote the destruction of our city. As we ram through what I'd like to call an 11th-hour trilogy of madness, these three bills that have passed would prove disastrous for the public safety of everyday New Yorkers. Introductions 586, 549, and 632 protect criminals and harm the law-abiding citizen. All objectives on par for this body. These bills have no public support and are being pushed through to make some feel good. Quoting one of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, "This is legislation on emotion rather than common sense." Since Defund the Police is now too politically toxic in a continuing attempt to dismantle the police, Intro 586 will jam up our men and women in blue and handcuff them further. Intro 549 will hurt and endanger our hard-working corrections officers. Intro 632A would create a protected class for criminals to the detriment of small landlords and tenants. We cannot turn our cops into desk jockeys. We cannot turn our city jails into vacation homes for the most dangerous criminals. We cannot help prospective tenants by creating a protected class for criminals. These bills disrespect our police officers, corrections officers, and everyday New Yorkers from every community. I urge my colleagues to listen to their constituents. Public safety is the number-one issue for New Yorkers. Your constituents would expect you all to vote no on these disastrous bills. With that, I vote no on pre-considered Reso 864, Introductions 538A, 549A, 563A, 586A, 632A, 781B, 944A, 948A, 1011A, 1161A, and 1153A. Thank you.
Williams.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. You know, as a still kind of like new council member, when we had the hearing on 632A, it was quite contentious, and you know, one of the first times I felt like I was on the hot seat and wondering why I got myself into this. But today really signifies why we do what we do, because we can have progress and we can make a good change for all of New Yorkers. So I'm really excited about this vote. Thank you, Majority Leader, for your leadership, and the Speaker, of course. I also want to thank the public advocate and his office for fielding many of my concerns, questions, and comments on solitary confinement and reporting on police stops. Last but not least, I am a CUNY student for the record and a fellow, and I proudly vote aye on all.
Juan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I just want to congratulate all of my colleagues and thank the Speaker, the public advocate, the Majority Leader for all of your leadership to end 2023. advocate, the Majority Leader, for all of your leadership to end 2023 with a bang, to make sure that we're banning solitary confinement, that we are moving towards progress with How Many Stops Act, that we are going to have reporting on unethical, inhumane homeless sweeps, that we are going to continue to move towards a better New York City for, for all of us, especially in a council that reflects, that looks, and finally seems like we're reflecting the actual people who we represent. So thank you so much, and happy holidays. Sorry, I meant aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Jaeger.
Hi. It's not the right time, right?
Minutes. Go ahead.
No, I was talking about the big clock on the top. I'm gonna spare everybody. I vote aye on all, with the exception of introductions 538, 549, 563, 586, 632, 781, 944, 1161. And I respectfully abstain on introduction 1278, as I typically do on that topic. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jaeger. What your abstention was on?
1278.
Thank you. Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye, and I want to say a very big thank you to all the folks from the Fair Chance House and Coalition who are here today and helped build this bill. And I want to also recognize Councilmember Steve, former Councilmember Steve Levin, who carried this bill and fought very hard for it as well. He's here in the audience as well. And with that, I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
We're gonna take a moment to tally the vote. All right, quiet in the chamber, please. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstentions, with the exception of introduction 586A, adopted by a vote of 35 in the affirmative, nine negative, three abstentions. Land use items 196 and 197 with accompanying resolutions are adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, one negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 538A, adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, seven negative, one abstention. Introduction 549A, adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, seven negative and one abstention. Introduction 563A, adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 585A, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, zero negative and one abstention. Introduction 632A, adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, eight negative and one abstention. Introduction 781A, adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, seven negative and one abstention. Introduction 944A, adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions. Introductions 948A and 1011A, adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 1131A, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, one negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 1161A, adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 1153, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, five negative and zero abstentions. Introduction 1278, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, zero negative and one abstention. And finally, resolution 864, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, three negative and zero abstentions. We are now going to move into the introduction and reading of bills. Call on Speaker Adams.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of our resolutions. We have six resolutions to vote on today, which we will do by voice vote. We'll now, if you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify, please be quiet. Please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into record. We'll take a voice vote on each one. Resolution 241A calls about the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign the Fair and Timely Parole Act and Elder Parole Act. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 473 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign Senate Bill Number 1099 and Assembly Bill Number 1963, which would protect youth during custodial police interrogation. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 556B calls on the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign the Access to Representation Act, establishing the right to legal counsel in immigration court proceedings and provides for the administrative thereof. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 584 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign legislation to enter the Interstate Medical Licenseure Compact, the Nurse Licenseure Compact, the Psychology Interjurisdictional Compact, to enhance the portability of medical and mental health providers to become licensed in multiple participating states. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 837 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign Senate Bill 4717 and Assembly Bill Number 3149 to authorize the New York State Department of Veterans Services to provide eligible veterans with financial assistance for purchasing training and the upkeep of service dogs and emotional support dogs. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Pre-considered resolution 863 condemns recent attacks on members of the sick community in the city of New York and seeks a swift end to any discrimination against sick New Yorkers. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into today's general discussion. We have four individuals signed up. We will first hear from Councilmember Charles Patton.
Thank you very much, my colleagues. You know, I heard a lot in these chambers, but today, the first time I've ever heard anyone say that we are making jails vacation homes for criminals, I suggest that you go on vacation. And, and, and check it out for yourself, for yourself. My colleagues, this is my last talk with you. Hey, hey, wait, I don't know what that clap means. Wait a minute. I want to see some tears. Don't be clapping. This is my last speech with you, but I came here as a black radical revolutionary, black power advocate socialist. That's what I am. I'm anti-imperialist wars. I'm anti-capitalism. That's what I am. And so when I come here, I have to be true to who I am. So when you see some of my votes go a certain way, it's because it doesn't align with my principles, and I don't want to be overly pragmatic. There's always a challenge between pragmatism and principles. And you have to be very aware of crossing that line and rationalizing pragmatism and violating your principles. So I want to come before you this last time. Be strong. Be powerful. Keep your spine straight. Speak your conscience and speak for your people, because we are dying and suffering. This is the most powerful, I asked that you extend, but don't interrupt me the last time.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just had to check, because I'm getting on a roll here. So our people are counting on you. You have the power. Adam Clayton Powell was the first black city council member. He said, "Use what's in your hands." You got the power in your hands to pass budgets that are for the people, to pass budgets that really deal with poverty and unemployment. We should not be passing development projects that are not 60 to 80% affordable for our people. This is the most powerful council in the world, and it's in your hands to say to our people, "We're gonna take care of our retirees." They deserve it. We're gonna take care of the least of these in our communities that are in poverty. There's enough money in a hundred and, next year, $10 billion budget, $8 billion reserve, to take care of poverty in black and brown districts. There's never been a allocation dealing with poverty on a real level. So I came here to use power. And as I told you when I first came in, there's a difference between power and influence. When you have to scream, holler, demonstrate to get people in power to make a decision in your best interest, that's influence. When you have the power to pass a budget and people have to use influence on you to get you to vote a certain way, you're not using your power in the best interest of our people. So as I leave, you will hear from me again, trust me. Trust me. Matter of fact, I'm gonna be so bad, bad means good white folk in our community. I'm gonna be a bad black man out there organizing. Y'all are gonna campaign for me to come back in here. That's how bad I'm gonna be. And the Speaker's gonna lead the drive. She's gonna lead the drive. So I want to say to my beloved East New York community, I thank you for your support over the years, and I thank you for helping us secure $388 million schools in our district, renovated over $106 million worth of park renovations. We have a new library coming in our district, built from the ground up, and changed the name of one of our parks from Skank Park, a slaveholder, to Sankofa Park, a liberating name. So we were able to do that, $50 million worth of scholarships for CUNY students. And looking at all of the jobs we created, see, a lot of people think I'm just taking on governors and mayors and talking all of that stuff, but we delivered in East New York, and I could not have done this without my beloved African queen, Inez Barron. Inez Barron. She had to go. She was here earlier with my grandchildren. So I just wanted to leave that with y'all. Come on, y'all, use your power. Use your power for our people. I'll be back, and I'm gonna come back stronger than ever. So I just want to say I thank you for what? I'm trying to think. No, I thank you. I thank you for the things that you did do. There are some progressive things that did happen. Give credit where credit is due, but we can do so, so much more. So as I leave, on my last day, I want to continue to say to you, black power. Black power. And with that, I drop the mics.
Thank you for the hours of entertainment you've also provided me, Councilmember Marum. I'll now call on Councilmember Velazquez.
Typical white man calling my intellectualism entertainment.
Oh, no, no, come on. I don't think that's uncalled for, but we'll call on now Councilmember Velazquez.
During my two-year tenure, and with the help of my colleagues, I fought extremely hard to become a voice for those communities who, for years, felt underrepresented in District 13. I fought for budget equity for all communities within the district, having helped and empowered and promoted advocacy on a range of issues, from racial and gender equality and to representation. On public safety, I worked with all the precincts in my district to make sure they got the funds and resources they needed to help maintain our streets safe. I'm also proud of the work I did alongside the New York City Sheriff's Office, protecting small business owners and local entrepreneurs in New York City, burgeoning cannabis industry. small business owners and local entrepreneurs in New York City, burgeoning cannabis industry, helping shut down illegal smoke shops that are acting in bad faith in regards to the legalization of marijuana. I'm proud of the work accomplished funding key community projects near and dear to me that greatly impacted our children and seniors, such as four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for upgrades for our computers, laptops and printers alone. I'm also proud of the bills we pass. Economic game changers such as open restaurants that will greatly boost our food industry here in New York. Forward-thinking environmental legislation such as choose to reuse and skip the stuff, outside-the-box bills such as one that allowed venues such as Yankee Stadium, Madison Square Garden to conduct legal raffles that benefit our local lawn profits. Before I head out, I want to thank Madam Speaker Adams. It's been such an incredible honor working alongside the first-ever African-American speaker. I also want to thank all my Bronx colleagues, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Althea Stevens, Priyana Sanchez, Kevin Riley, Oswald Feliz, Rafael Salamanca, Diana Yella and Amanda Farias, for all their support in all that we accomplished for the Bronx during my tenure, serving in District thirteen. And most importantly, I want to thank the constituents of District thirteen. We made history together, and if it wasn't for you, I would have never become the first Puerto Rican woman to represent District thirteen. Without you, the voters, I would never have served for the most diverse city in New York City's history with the first women-led majority city council. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And this isn't a goodbye for me. I've learned so much working for the people of District thirteen that I can't wait to continue serving those most in need. Let's just say till we meet again.
Thank you. Councilmember, we'll now hear from Councilmember Palladino.
Yes, hello. Charles Barron, I want to salute you. I want to say to you, uh, because I, I, you and I come from the same generation. You and I come from a generation of never give up, never give in, never take a knee. You stated before how you have to have a spine and you have to stand up for what you believe in. That's a two-way street. We all do. I do it for my district, you do it for yours. So with that being said, I would like to say thank you very much to everybody in this council. We need to take a long look at each and every one of us and what we need to do to work better together. Communication is key. Division is decisiveness, and nothing will ever come of this city for the better unless we learn how to communicate. I want to say this. You know, I'm looking back on the last year or so, and I've seen a lot of things that could have been done that were not accomplished, things that would have affected our average New Yorkers. And now our city is being taken over again by lawlessness and rioters night after night, sowing chaos in our streets, infecting our city with antisemitism. Many on this council have made their position very clear and allow me to make my position clear as well. There will be a ceasefire when Hamas surrenders, and not a minute before. And the antisemit, antisemitic rioters on our streets should be behind bars, along with those who financially support them. We have a lot of work to do next year, and I pray for peace and understanding here in New York, and I pray that we'll have the common sense to come together where it counts, even if it means compromise. Again, conversation, make that part of what we're unaccustomed to doing, it seems in this council. There are many good people, people who truly want the best for our city. Let's have the courage, please, to come together. I beg you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. God bless America and God bless New York City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember, now call on the public advocate, Jamani Williams.
Uh, thank you so much. And, uh, before I didn't get a chance to thank CPR Hall Solitary 1199, Danny Drum, who's here, and all the families who have been affected. I did wanted to say to Councilman Barron, thank you so much for the issues that you pushed, and I want to make it clear, as much as people sometimes disagreed on how Council Barron may have spread some of that information, nine point five out of ten times, you could not dispute the facts he was saying, nor the issue that he was bringing up, and I wanted to just be on the record of that. I did want to say that it is, to listen to folks, not who have some real concerns they want to discuss on the bill, but to listen to leaders who represent districts that don't deal with the type of violence and the response to violence that many folks do daily is insulting. To listen to those folks believe they want public safety more than the people who carry the trauma of people who have died along their lives through gun violence and other violence without getting the resources they needed, who have also felt the trauma of people dying in the streets from the overpolicing that has not dealt with the street violence, who were sandwiched between real street violence and overpolicing that has not resulted in ending that street violence. To hear people who are saying what we need to do is arrest the children of the people we arrested thirty years ago, you cannot want public safety more than we do because we deal with the trauma every single day. And all that I ask is that you listen to people who are actually going through it and know what works and what can help. Instead of telling folks they don't care about public safety and they just want lawlessness because nothing could be further from the truth. The folks who have gone to funeral after funeral after funeral, take that with us as we are making our decisions. And I want to correct one thing. Crime is an issue, particularly people feeling unsafe because of some of the rhetoric, but it is an issue. The number one issue, however, is affordability. And so I hope the people who are talking about the issues that people have will join us in changing the affordability issues just as loudly as you have spoken about the bills here today. Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak now in general discussion? I see a lot of those. I do want to tell, Councilmember Riley asked me to remind folks that the BLAC is meeting in the committee room. Happy holidays to everyone. Happy New Year. And with that, I call on Speaker, guys, I call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's, to close out today's state meeting.
Might I adjourn? Colleagues, it has been my esteemed honor to serve as your speaker. For two years, we've done some great work together as a body. We have pushed things forward that have been unheard of. We look forward to our continued collaboration, one side of the floor and the other side of the floor. We are one New York City council. Happy holidays and love. This meeting is adjourned.